of Appeals pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 23 extending certain COVID measures adopted during the state of emergency suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until March 31, 2025. This meeting in the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for on the order. A reminder, persons who'd like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling 508-945-4410, conference ID 798-324-739, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue, hearing, or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. Before I tell you the procedural steps, I will just ask that everybody shut off any device or gadget that makes any noise whatsoever, and please don't speak unless and until you're recognized by the chair and you're up at the microphone. First, we take a roll call vote of all board members to authorize this type of meeting, and we'll do that starting on this side. Go around.
Virginia Fenwick, I approve.
Lee Hovey, I approve.
Paul C. Sample, I approve.
Ed Acton, I approve.
David H. Veach, I approve.
And Randy Pardash, I approve as well. Next, we ask of any citizens or non-board members participating on the call via the phone only, please give your name and the last four digits of your telephone number for identification purposes if recognized. The hearing notice will be read by our staff, Sarah Clark on my right. Then you, or your representative, will present your appeal or application. Anyone in favor of the appeal or application may speak for up to five minutes, and there'll be a clock up there. And after that, I'll read any and all, I'll summarize, letters received by the board. Then it'll be asked if anyone has any questions or has statements against the appeal. After that, we will ask if there's any questions from the board. We will close the public hearing, deliberate, and usually we vote. So after all that, we'll take a roll call vote to end the meeting and give a verbal confirmation of what time that is. So at this point, we have minutes from September 12, 2024. Ms. Fenwick?
I move to approve the minute stated September 12, 2024.
I second. Oh, yeah, very good. And roll call vote on that for whoever was here?
I approve.
I approve.
I approve?
And I approve.
Okay, very good, very good. All right, so the first application is 66 Othelma Drive, number 24-099.
Application number 24-099, Damon and Lisa Harrell, care of James M. Norcross Esquire, PO Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 66 Othelma Drive, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 11G Block 30 Lot G33. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and garage and the construction of a new dwelling. The proposed dwelling will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration and under the Second Except Clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 1,509 square feet, and the proposed building coverage is 2,581 square feet, where 2,900 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains 90.87 feet of frontage where 100 feet is required. The lot contains 24,100 square feet in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section 5, be it protected by law.
Welcome, Attorney Norcross.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Jamie Norcross, representing Damon and Lisa Harrell. Lisa is here with me this afternoon in the black vest in the back. As I'm sure you saw in your packet, we received a number of letters that came in this week from neighbors with concerns about the project, so we are asking if we can continue our hearing until December 5. We've read the letters. We haven't had a chance to reach out to any folks yet, which we would like to do, and see if we can work with everyone to address these concerns.
Okay, before we get a motion and a vote on that, would you like to hear from the board any comments?
Sure.
On this? Would you, would that help?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, that'd be great.
We know you're gonna do a redo on your project, but if that would be helpful, we're willing-
That would be very helpful for us.
We're willing to do that.
Sure, great.
All right, so let's start with Dave Veach. Just comments on that.
Yeah, well, I, you know, I spent a little bit of time out there, and before I'd seen the letters, and I had a couple of things that, I mean, I think overall, it's, I was looking at it and looking with respect to the size of the proposed house with respect to the others in the neighborhood, surrounding neighborhood, and, you know, noting that the proposal, and I'm not sure, there may be good reasons for it, but it looks like the proposal is to elevate the first floor elevation by about five feet over where it currently is. Would that and the somewhat larger and perhaps somewhat taller sized building lead, was leading to a 10.4-foot increase in the height from the existing ridge to the proposed ridge, all of which I think speaks to some concerns with respect to the visual impact on the neighborhood, and I think that some of the letters from the neighbors reflected that. I think, yeah, those were the main things that I was considering. And then, on the other hand, on the other part of it, I will say that I think if I'd had to make a decision today, I probably would have been maybe perhaps in looking more towards the neighbors' concerns, but I am also cognizant of that this is a proposal where it meets all the dimensional requirements of the bylaw. And another way to look at this would be, were it not for nine linear feet of frontage, they wouldn't be here at all. So I try to keep that, I would keep that in mind with my considerations, but it's also, this is one where neighborhood considerations are important to us, so, thanks.
Thank you. Ed?
Yeah, when I went out to the site, you know, I noticed most of the houses in the neighborhood are single-story houses, but there are a few two-story, and I'm not suggesting that you limit yourself to that. It does meet, you know, all of the setbacks, and as Dave said, it's very close to just being a non-conform, I mean, a conforming property and you not even being here. So I think, you know, it may be considered perhaps a little bit big for that neighborhood, but it's, it's, in my view, it's close, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Jenny?
Yeah, well, I agree with Mr. Veach. Criteria two and five for me. I've read the letters from the neighbors, and I agreed with almost everything that was said. It's, it is non-conforming. It's close to being conforming, but that's really irrelevant. I drove around the neighborhoods, the intersecting streets, Carolyn, Barbara, Jeanette. I don't think I saw more than three houses that were even two stories, you know, full two stories. So I think what's being proposed is considerably too large for the neighborhood.
And Lee? Yeah, I agree with all my colleagues. It's a beautiful site, beautiful view, but it's in a modest neighborhood with modest homes. And although I agree it needs to be rebuilt or renovated, I still struggle with criteria number two. It's the neighborhood.
And Paul?
I guess I will agree with most of the comments that my colleagues have made. I am very cognizant of the fact that this basically complies with all of the standards of the dimensional requirements. And as Dave points out, but for the lack of nine feet on frontage, it wouldn't even be here. I did note that there are some larger places in the neighborhood. Coming up, Barbara Drive, towards this property, on the left-hand side, there's a fairly large house, it seems to me, which is, to a certain extent, out of proportion with some of the other smaller places around. Some of the comments that have been made, I think, relate to the question of whether there would be an increase in the value of other properties and how that might affect taxes. I don't think that's a relevant consideration for us. I think that's true with respect to almost any property that we see that's renovated. So I think that I understand the concerns of the neighbors, and I want to be sympathetic to that, but at the same time, people have the property, they do have the ability to build, and they are conforming, so with respect to the changes that they're making. So that's what I'm going to think about.
Yeah, so I just, I'll just add that I agree with all my colleagues. We have criteria, and it is true that the value of property is not one of the criteria, so don't feel slighted that's never going to be considered, and how many letters we get isn't even considered. It's taken into effect in terms of, makes us think of what you're thinking, but you can have 100 letters or one letter, and we still go by the criteria. And in this case, two and five stand out to me, which are compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. It's a lot bigger, and I'm not happy about how it looks like a three-story right now because of that basement being so elevated. It's not the best look for that neighborhood. And also, number five, impact of scale, sighting, and mass on neighborhood visual character, including views, vistas, and street scape. So we're really glad that you're gonna come back and hope this was helpful.
Yeah.
Get a motion, Paul? Continue?
Yes, what is the date that was being offered?
We, December 5.
Okay, I'll move to grant the request of continuance to December 5, 2024.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Ed?
Ed Acton votes yes.
Jenny votes yes.
And Paul?
All votes yes?
As do I.
Great.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day. And next, we have 24-100, 124 Moon Cussers Lane. And what do you need, sir?
[inaudible]
Okay. After Sarah reads the advertisement, we'll get to Attorney Ford.
Application number 24-100, Elizabeth A. Sorenson, 2019 Trust, care of Michael D. Ford Esquire, PO Box 485 West Harwich, Mass. 02671. Owner of property located at 124 Moon Cussers Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 10A Block 4, Lot H2. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a non-conforming dwelling on a conforming lot via the construction of an addition. The existing dwelling is non-conforming in that it exceeds the maximum building coverage allowed. The existing building coverage is 3,014 square feet, and the proposed building coverage is 3,328 square feet, where 3,000 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot contains 29,856 square feet of buildable upland in an R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section 5B, be it protected by law.
Attorney Ford, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the zoning board. Mike Ford, here on behalf of the Sorensens, the owners of this property, together with Aaron Palhemus of Palhemus Savery de Silva, designers and builders on this project. So before I go to Mr. Palhemus and have him kind of walk you through the proposed new attached porch, a little bit about the history of this site, I think is important from your standpoint in terms of making judgments on the criteria when we get there. This is a lot that's 52,890 square feet, and there is just under 30,000 square feet of buildable upland. However, when this house was built in 2014, it was built as of right. It had a little bit in excess of 40,000 square feet of buildable upland, and then the floodplain changes came in latter part of 2014. And as a result of that, over 12,000 square feet of this lot that previously was buildable upland was no longer buildable upland. It was quite a dramatic change for this particular parcel. And so the house that was built did not max out the lot coverage. There was still over 1,000 square feet at that time in lot coverage, under the 10%. And so that's how we end up with this kind of, you might say to yourself, how did you become non-conforming at 10.1 lot coverage? What occurred to have that happen? Well, it was the change in the floodplain that reconfigured the buildable upland on this particular site. If I were you, I'd have the same question. Well, how did the house, if it was built as of right, become non-conforming in terms of the coastal conservancy setback at 47 feet where it's supposed to be 50? Same thing. It was, it had more than sufficient distance from the conservancy district, but when the floodplain changed, it did not. It became non-conforming as to that. So that's just kind of the background of this lot that I asked you to consider when I get to the criteria, and we go through that in more detail. But we're here today for the porch. What I'd like to do, Madam Chair, is to have Mr. Palhemus walk you through the design and the site plan, and then he'll return it to me, and I'll kind of walk through in more detail the criteria.
Sure.
Good afternoon, Aaron Palhemus.
Welcome.
Palhemus Savery de Silva. Thank you. So we'll just, we'll run through this addition here pretty quickly. So this is the, you can see here, this is the existing footprint of the structure, and then this is the screen porch. So it's a single-story, you know, small addition that just provides an area to basically sit outside and not be attacked by a lot of bugs in the summer. So 376 square feet. If you go to the next page, this just shows foundation. Again, here is the, here is the small addition for the screen porch, and then there's also proposed little stair here to get down to the lower level. And then the next page, and this just shows the single-story addition, and then the next page is gonna show there's no change to the second floor other than there's a roof line, but that's at the first floor level. So again, single-story addition. This just, we just, for those of you, if any of you didn't make it out to the site, this is a very private site, over an acre. We designed and built this home back prior to the flood map change, and, you know, very, very private site back there in Moon Cussers. This just shows that single-story screen porch addition off the rear, and then the side, the west elevation here, there's that stair. And then this is from the driveway side or the north elevation. And then from the, from the east elevation, this is the side yard elevation. There is a, they have a pool out here that was installed a few years ago. So again, this just provides some outdoor seating where they can view the pool and see the pool from the outside, while being protected. That's really the goal as they, their family expands, and this is a multi-generational property with, you know, family and kids that enjoy the outdoor space. So that, I think, provides an overview, but I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has about the proposed structure.
Thank you.
So if I may, Madam Chairman, I'll go to the criteria. First, adequacy of the size of the site, including but not limited to maximum lot or building coverage and setbacks. As I indicated in my opening, the site's over 50,000 square feet, but under today's floodplain, it has a little less than 30,000 square feet of upland, where 40,000 is required. And as I indicated in the opening, the house is non-conforming now in terms of the conservancy district being 47 feet at its closest point. The building coverage has also become non-conforming as a result of the floodplain, 314 square feet or 10.1%, where 3,000 or 10% is the maximum. And we propose to increase that building coverage by 314 square feet for the porch, about a percentage on the building coverage. We think the site is adequate. It's a generous site, and the location of the porch is, we believe, well-placed in terms of impacts on the neighborhood. So compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. I did give the board, as part of my handout, a table that's attached in the back to give you an idea of the size of the houses in this particular neighborhood. All these figures were taken off of the assessor's field cards. You can see I highlighted 124 Moon Cusser. And I try to do, as the board I know is interested in terms of massing, GFA. And so the left-hand column, you'll see the GFA of the neighborhood. We probably fit somewhere in the middle at 8,188, counting all floors on the house, and counting the porch would be 85. There's certainly some smaller, but there are some that are larger as well. So we think that we are compatible with the neighborhood, given where the location is. We think it's a compatible house. You'll see, I also put the stories, and again, I took this information from the assessor's records. There are probably half a dozen full-two-story houses, of which we're kind of one, although they list us at 1.9. We're really a two-story house, I'd suggest, but that's how the listing is on the assessors. But there, I couldn't find a one-story house in this neighborhood, so, as you might suspect. So with respect to criteria number two, I think we are compatible with the porch. The extent of the proposed increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure or use, the only thing going up is lot coverage, and since we are over on lot coverage, although only by a point, we are allowed to ask for this, and you need to make a finding that it would not be substantially more detrimental. And that's the reason I kind of gave you the history of this house, because when it was built, it was conforming, the lot was conforming, the lot coverage was conforming. It became non-conforming by virtue of the floodplain change, not by virtue of a vote of town meeting to change the area or setbacks or coverage. And so we reasoned, in speaking with our clients, that perhaps the board would be amenable to a small increase in the lot coverage in this kind of unique situation where, when the house was built, there was, they left 1,000 square feet or so of lot coverage on the table, so to speak, and their inability to utilize that is directly related to the floodplain change in 2014. So that's the history on that. That's the only increase in nonconformity on this site. Suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties or the natural environment. We don't believe the, this will have any proposed impact on the neighboring properties. If you take a look at the map, I also attached at the back, you'll see our site, which I highlighted, kind of a panhandle that leads down to the river, and the, the screen porch is off to the side of that. All these houses are located, if you had a chance to get down there, frankly, in a situation where they're all kind of set with privacy and nice settings. This lot has a This lot has a nice setting, and we don't think the porch is going to do anything to change that. So we think that it will not have a negative impact on views, vistas, and streetscapes in the neighborhood, or affect the visual character under number five and the neighbor, the neighboring uses under number six. It'll continue to be residential, so there's no change to the use. The, no new sewer system or septic system is proposed. You'll read a letter, Madam Chair, from the Board of Health that they have no problem with the porch from a health standpoint. We don't think it will have any impact on traffic flow, safety, or litter, or noise. The utilities are adequate. The formula business and the lateral extension within the floodplain are both not applicable, I'd respectfully suggest, since we're not working in the floodplain. So that's our presentation on the criteria.
Oh, thank you so much. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Please make it known. Seeing none, I will read the one correspondence from Judith Giorgio, our health agent, on October 8th, 2024. She tells us that she has no concerns regarding the addition of the screen room and entryway to basement as depicted on the proposed plan. Judy. Next, we will see if there's anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application or has a specific question. If so, please make it known. No one's here, and no one's online that we can see. So now we'll go to questions from the board. Lee.
I have no questions.
Paul?
No questions.
Ed?
Just one question, the, taking the bulkhead out and putting in the stairs, just curious the reasoning for that.
Yeah, so, sorry. Clients would like to have more direct access to the lower level. They may at some point choose to add a bonus room down there, so being able to come down there with kids and have direct access, also getting furniture, outdoor furniture in and out, and not going down through a bulkhead, having that stair makes it a lot easier for them.
Super. Thanks.
And Davee?
Thanks, Mike, for your explanation, the history. I was a little suspicious when I read the 3,014 square, and knowing that this project had come before us, that it, you know, so I understand now, and that was the only question I might have had. Thank you.
Yeah, and Jenny?
Same here. That was my question, and you answered that.
Yeah, and I don't have any questions, so Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Davee Veach seconds and votes yes.
Ed?
Ed votes yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Well?
Paul votes yes.
As do I. All right, deliberations. Jenny?
Well, I, I think Mr. Ford did a great job explaining what, why it was over and that it really isn't over. It's a large lot, very private, not visible to neighbors. 314 square feet is only 1% of their total buildable upland, even their revised buildable upland, so I, I don't have any concerns.
And Lee?
Yeah, I have no concerns about this project either. I think it, you know, the lot's very private, as Jenny said. It's, it's a small addition. I think it's going to be very nice.
And Ed?
A new issue. It's interesting, I was thinking about if it was, just came to the 10% and not, and not the 10 per one, 10.1%, you'd be here for a variance, and I almost think variance might be approved as well, given the circumstances.
And Davee?
Yeah, I agree with, with all, all previous. It's, I would imagine that there are times when it'd be very helpful to have a screen porch in that setting, and it's no, it doesn't even look to be visible to any of the neighbors, so it's not going to have any impact. It's not substantially more detrimental in any way, shape, or form, so I'll support it.
All right. Paul, your thoughts?
I agree with our, my colleagues, it's certainly not substantially more detrimental. Meets all our criteria.
And I, I agree. Paul, any conditions, you think?
Well, I guess the question would be, when do you plan to do this work?
This, this season, like the off, the off-season, between now and the summer.
Well, you're familiar, I take it, with that access, because that's a pretty limited access. I think I backed up twice going down there to let people come out.
Which, yeah, the moon, the moon cussers.
Yes.
Access.
Yeah.
Yeah, it depends on, yeah, when you, yeah, when you hit it.
Okay.
But yeah, we, you know, we did build this house down there, and, you know, we're, we're comfortable we can do this in a way where it's not impacting. We're not going to be doing it while they're there during the summer, so it would be an off-season project.
All right. I'm not sure I see a need for the standard conditions. I'll just move to approve the application as submitted.
And Davee Veach seconds and votes yes.
Ed?
Ed votes yes.
Jenny? Jenny votes yes.
Paul? Paul votes yes.
As do I. Thank you so much, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next on the list is 27 Blackberry, and it's going to be Attorney Riley, who'll be ready when Sarah reads the application in a moment.
Application number 24-102, 27 Blackberry LLC, care of William F. Riley Esquire, Peel Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 27 Blackberry Lane, also shown in the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 15D Block 28 Lot 102. The applicant seeks to modify special permit number 24-057, granted on June 13th, 2024, which allowed for the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The applicant now seeks to modify the special permit to allow for the existing nonconforming garage to remain. The proposed dwelling to be located 16.7 feet from the road where 13, is proposed to be located 16.7 feet from the road where 13.8 feet was approved and 25 feet is required, and the exterior mechanical appliances to be located 10.5 feet from the East Hurley of Butter where 12.6 was approved and 15 is required. The approved building coverage was 1,791 square feet, 29.1%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,780 square feet, 28.9%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming in that it contains 6,161 square feet where 20,000 square feet is required in our 20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Welcome, Attorney Riley and Mr. Roy. Nice to see you.
Good afternoon. Bill Riley with Rick Roy. The, as I indicated before the meeting to the members, I, I thought I'd just highlight the changes. So this, you approved this project last summer, and the changes are very modest, spurred on by a comment made by Dave Nixon about saving the old shed. He referred to it as a garage, but it's really just a shed, unless you have a Model A and you want to park it in there, but lotting cars don't fit. Anyway, so as Sarah just read, billing coverage is going down from 29.1% to 28.9%. I think one of the biggest changes is that the front setback is now going to be 16.7 feet, almost 17, where previously it was 13.8. So the billing's moving back from the street. Billing height is coming down about six inches, and the gross floor area is going from 4,667 square feet to 3,972 square feet. So I think the changes are all good. You can tell by the crowd we have here that there are deep interest in the neighborhood. So I'll keep talking if you want, but I think.
Does Rick Roy have anything to say?
Yeah, I wish Dave was here. Because, of course, I had to redesign the whole house in order to be able to get it to work and recoup the square footages that we had used from the garage in the house. So anyways, we were able to do it. So basically, the house in its massing is a little bit smaller than it was before, so we're heading in an even better direction, so I would think this would be a pretty easy one to approve.
Okay, good to know. And is there anybody, are you done with your presentation then? Okay, thank you. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please make it known. Seeing no one anywhere, I will read the one correspondence from Judith Giorgio, our health agent, on 10/8/2024. She tells us she has no concerns regarding the changes to the special permit. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application or has a specific question? If so, make it known. Seeing nobody, again, online or here that wishes to do so, we'll have questions from the board, and we'll go around this way. Davee Veach?
So the only thing that I was noticed in the, in the ad and was just asking about was, it looks like there's, you're reducing the setback for the mechanicals by a little bit? What's, what's the, is, is that the case? Oh, I see, yeah. Okay.
I don't have a site plan in front of me, so I.
Well, it looks like, so, I mean, as part of the change, it looks to me that, oh, there's an existing 12.2 feet. Oops. And the.
I know you weren't here when I whined about that, so we're going to let it go this time.
But the proposed is.
It's off now.
The proposed is 10.5. That's, that's. It's not a concern, I just wanted, I just noticed that was part of the, part of it.
I mean, that there were mechanicals in that setback anyway, so we're not really changing anything.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, that's all.
Okay. Ed?
No questions.
And Jenny, questions?
That was my question. So are you saying it was, just the way that it read in the, in the, in the, I guess, the ad, it sounded like that was a change, but that wasn't a change from the last time?
Yeah, it's, if it's on the site plan, it's a change, because I'm sure that there was a dimension to it that Wendy would have changed. We are very careful about making sure that we're putting all the proper dimensions on the plan, because when they go back to do the as-built, if we have put it in the wrong place, then we have to come back, and we don't want to do that.
Yeah, so, no, that's, I mean, I'm fine with it too, because you made other changes that were, several that were improvements.
And Lee?
No questions.
Well?
Yes, I noticed Dave commented the last hearing too, and I thought, well, it'd be interesting to see what happens if they come back with the garage.
Well, now you know what happened.
Yeah, okay. I have no questions.
And I don't either. So Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Davee Veach seconds and votes yes.
Ed votes yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Paul votes yes.
As do I. Okay, deliberations. Paul?
Well, I, I think the changes, if anything, are for the better, and I don't see any reason to say that we should not go with our original approval and conditions.
Okay, Lee?
I, I agree with Paul. I think the changes are minimal. I think it's great that they can keep the garage as well, the shed, garage, whatever.
And Jenny?
I agree with my colleagues, the changes are improvements, and we are happy that you're keeping the garage.
And Ed?
Meets all our criteria, so no issues.
Dave?
Certainly not substantially more detrimental than the original proposal that we approved, and so I support it.
And we would have approved it the first time, obviously, so, Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted with the same conditions as were on the prior approval.
Thank you. Davee Veach seconds and votes yes.
Ed votes yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Paul votes yes.
As do I. It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
When Sarah's ready, we're going to screw over to 57 Cabot Lane.
Oh, when Sarah's ready, we're going to go to 57 Cabot Lane, 24-104, Michael Ford, Esquire.
Application number 24-104, Richard and Andrea Cawthorn, care of Michael D. Ford, Esquire, Peel Box 485, West Harwich, Mass. 02671. Owners of property located at 57 Cabot Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 7B Block 33, Lot S49. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a conforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The proposed dwelling will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered as a substantial alteration under the Second Except Clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48. Such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 1,342 square feet, 11.2%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,792 square feet, 14.9%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming in that it contains 12,000 square feet where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Welcome back, Attorney Ford and Mr. Palimis.
Nice to be back, Madam Chair and members of the board. Mike Ford, I'm here representing Richard and Andrea Cawthorn, the owners of 57 Cabot Lane. And again, Mr. Palimis is with me, Palimis Savery de Silva. They're the designers and the builders on this particular project. So this is a, a raise and replace, so to speak. We seek to remove the existing structure and build a new house on this particular site. I was struck in the first hearing this evening, where a couple of members said, gee, the metrics all meet the metrics of the byline, and yet you're here, or they were there, because of a lack of sufficient frontage. In this, in this particular project, we have, we're meeting all the metrics, height, coverage, setbacks, but the lot doesn't meet, the lot area. But I think this is a very different set of facts than, than the first one that you faced, where there was a lot of opposition. I think you'll find there are two letters in favor on this one, and there's no letters in opposition. And I think you'll find, if you look at this neighborhood, that the house fits into this neighborhood that's being proposed, not only in terms of its look, but in terms of its size, massing, height, and area. It fits kind of in the middle of the gross floor area. Again, this is one where I've tried to come up with a very comprehensive chart, using not just the houses around us that were of similar size, but all of them, to give you a flavor of what's out there. I attached that to the back of my findings, and I'll get into that in more detail. So at this point, Madam Chair, if he could, I'd like to have Mr. Palimis walk you through the project.
Sure.
Hello again. So Harding Shores, just assume everyone knows this area. Here's just a little aerial of, of the neighborhood. We've, we've actually, just counting, we've done, I think, nine homes in this neighborhood over the last couple decades. We feel like we know the neighborhood quite well. This gives a, you know, an overview of, of what's there. The site we're talking about right here is 57, and the clients, our clients who purchased the, the property came to us, asking to design a house that fit in nicely to the neighborhood. So we've been working closely with them to develop this, this home for, for their family, which they're very excited about. And I'll just roll through the, the presentation here. So this just shows some of the neighboring homes. For those of you that didn't make it out, if anyone didn't make it out, we just have a number of photos. So 17 Cabot, this is 17 Cabot, right down the street. 2025 Cabot, a couple doors down. 38 Billings, this is directly in front of, of 57. 48, one down from, from 57. 56, also in front. 66, this is diagonally in front. We were actually before you about a year ago and permitted a reconstruction here as well, so diagonally across. 49 is, you know, Nickerson, which is the street over, so this is a couple houses over. 52 is on the corner of Nickerson and Billings. 44, one house up from that. 39, Nickerson, which is a couple houses down as well. 34, Nickerson, one house up from 44. 24, which is diagonally across from Cabot Lane, or directly across. And then 12, Nickerson, which is one up from that. 70 Cabot, which is kind of diagonally across the street to the, to the northwest from our, our property. And then this is the house directly next door, so this is next door to 56, front and back. And then here is the, the home where, where before you this afternoon. So you can see, it's a kind of cape that's, you know, been expanded over the years, dormer kind of has been. Dormer kind of has been added on both sides, and it's, you know, it is quite dated now. Here's the site, the existing, existing site, and then proposed. As Mike shared, we do meet all of the requirements, setbacks, coverage, septic system, you know, fits right in the front here, and everything, you know, everything fits within the requirements, the zoning parameters. Proposed, lower level, and then first floor. You can see a relatively compact first floor. This client did choose to do a garage, which most of the homes in the neighborhood don't have garages because they are smaller lots. This client chose to have a garage, so that does kind of eat up, if you will, some of the living space, but they did want to have a place to put a vehicle and store things. So, there's a one-car garage tucked in the front, so that does take, you know, take some of that living space. You can see, it's a pretty compact first floor, small bedroom, and then a second floor with basically sleeping and, you know, one room over the garage. So, pretty compact home. They did take advantage of that lower level, which is, you know, really the foundation, right? So, building out the foundation to have some additional space for family and kids, but above-grade, it's about a 3,000-square-foot structure, so. Proposed front elevation, which we feel, you know, fits in. We drew in a lot of the different details within the neighborhood, the shingle style, shutters, you know, arches, architecture that's very consistent with what you see in the neighborhood we've pulled into this design. And just a side elevation, there's that garage, you know, tucked in. You can see, you know, pretty compact, but it all works. And then the rear, this is the water side, side of the face is the water, I should say. And then this is the other side elevation from the east. We also did a rendering. This shows, we rendered in the proposed structure, so that's the proposed structure there. What we wanted to do is you can get a view of it within the neighborhood, so you can see how it, you know, fits in in terms of material, shingle style. Yeah, that's great. Thank you for zooming it. Shingle style with the shutters.
Streetscape.
The streetscape, yeah. Really kind of consistent with what you see, and we wanted to... We did that for our client and figured we'd share it with you all as well. And then we did one from the water as well, even though you won't see this unless you're flying, I guess, or you're up in a drone, but just kind of helpful to see how it fits in within the neighborhood. As Attorney Ford shared before, you know, this is a neighborhood that's developed over the years and has kind of a consistent theme now of shingle style, you know, story and a half, two-story, some even more than that, homes. But this house is really a, you know, story, story and a half, story, three-quarter with the dormers. And, you know, we feel, you know, fits in well. Hopefully, you all feel the same. You can see, you know, red cedar roof, white cedar sidewall, you know, same kind of look and feel as the rest of the neighborhood. So, I thought it was helpful to show that. And then this is just another one that shows... This is the house I mentioned before, 66 Billings. We were before you about a year ago, had this one permitted as well.
That's not yet built.
So, it hasn't yet been built, but that was permitted about a year ago, and this is kind of diagonally in front of 57. So, we just figured to show kind of what the future view from the air would look like for what it's worth. And I think that's that, but happy to answer any questions if anyone has.
Thank you.
So, if I may, Madam Chair, I'll go through the criteria with the board. First, the adequacy of size of the site, including not limited to maximum lot, building coverage, and setbacks. So, the lot is undersized, as I indicated, but it is, if you look at the table, it fits within the lot size of most of the lots out there at 12,000 square feet. We think it's adequate, because taking the 12,000 square feet, we meet the lot coverage and the setbacks. So, there isn't any nonconformity being created here in terms of the new structure, other than the fact that we are on a nonconforming lot. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. I think we tried to give you that feel when we took you around the neighborhood, up and down Billings, Cabot, and Nickerson, and the other lanes that are in there. And we think that at a footprint of 1792, and if you look at my table, because I know you're always interested in the gross floor area, and we took the three floors there, 1411 is what we would end up. We think it's compatible with the neighborhood. Again, if you look at the table, we didn't find in the immediate area around there, and I tried to take as many of them as I could, only one, one-story house, and that's on the other side of the street from us at 52 Cabot. But obviously, I did include that to show you that. That's probably the smallest one I found, built in 93, and that's at 1,500 gross square footage. But I think that's kind of now out of keeping with the rest of this particular neighborhood, which is all two-stories or 1.75 or thereabouts. So, we'd suggest that the board could make a finding, that this is in keeping with the relative size of the other structures in the immediate neighborhood, and as a result, under number two, is compatible. The extent of proposed increase in nonconforming nature of the structure of use. There isn't any increase in any nonconforming structure or use. We are, however, seeking to build a new house on an undersized lot, but in terms of the metrics of nonconformity, there isn't any here that are being created. Four suitable sites, including not limited to impact on neighboring properties or on the natural environment, groundwater. Again, given the visual that we've tried to give you today, and hopefully that you got out there and took a look, we don't think this is going to have a negative impact. There's a two-story house in front of this one, between this one and the water. There's a large two-story house to the right of it. There's a two-story house that will be built per the special permit that we showed you on the right-hand view, and another one on the left-hand view along the beach. So, we don't believe this is going to impact the neighborhood in terms of visual character. We don't think it has a negative impact on the views and vistas. We tried to give you that one streetscape shot that PSD created for the clients to kind of give them an idea as to how it fits in. Compatibility of the proposed use with neighboring uses, I don't think that's really an issue here. They're all residential. Adequate of method of sewage disposal. A new septic system is proposed for the site. The Chair will refer to a letter from the Board of Health in which they indicate that the new house is proposed to be constructed over the existing system, and therefore, a new system needs to be designed. Well, it's shown on our site plan. We understand that. The design will be submitted to the Board of Health for their review and approval. No impact, I'd suggest, on traffic flow, safety, noise, litter. The utilities are adequate, and 11 and 12 are not applicable here. So, that's our position with respect to the criteria for your consideration, together with the chart attached with some additional information to help you in making that judgment call. One thing I didn't mention is there is an increase in height here. We're going to end up at 29.2. I tried to give you as many of the heights of the structures as I could, and the way I could give you so many of those directly is I could... I found the permits and looked right at the permits, and that's where I got the, you know, 29.6's, 28.9, 28.8, 29.6, and 28.6. I couldn't get the height off of the ones that have not had a recent permit, so I just said not available, but I'd suggest to you that two out of the three of those are two-story homes, so they're as high as a two-story house. So, I tried to give you that chart in terms of trying to help you come to some conclusions with respect to the height, because I know that's always a consideration for the board when there's a raise and replace. Here, I think, there's a strong argument that can be made that while it's a large increase in height with this structure, that its gross floor area and its height are compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. I think you have two letters in favor that you'll refer to, Madam Chair. One of them, and I can wait and address it after you read that letter, if you want. One of them raises a question about...
Fence.
A fence.
Yeah, right.
And so, all I can tell you on that is Aaron reported that to our clients as soon as we saw it. He's reached out, he's made contact with 67. They're gonna work out something on the fence going forward.
All right, we'll get to... I'll let you rebut, you know.
Yeah.
We'll revisit that.
Okay. That sounds like the right idea.
Just so we're crystal clear.
Okay.
Anything else? Nope. Thank you very much for your presentation. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate. The hand up. No hands are up. I will read the three correspondences. One is from our health agent, Judith Giorgio, received on 10/8/2024. I reviewed the proposed plan for this property. The proposed dwelling will encroach on the existing septic system. No septic flow increase is proposed. Application and plans for the new system will be required prior to approval of the building permit. Next, we have a letter from Michael and Kerry Frizzoli. On October 8, 2024, they tell us that they're writing in support of the proposed construction project on 57 Cabot Lane, which is being undertaken by their neighbors, Andrea and Rich Cawthorn. After reviewing the plans for the project, I believe the proposed design fits nicely with the character of our neighborhood. The project is well-thought-out, and we appreciate the care that has been taken to ensure that it complements the surrounding homes and community. I have not had any concerns regarding the proposed construction and feel it'll be a positive addition to our area and neighborhood. I hope the town will support this project, as I believe it will, enhance our neighborhood. Thank you for your time and consideration. And they're at 44 Nickerson Lane. Next, we have a note from Jim and Lillian McNulty from 67 Cabot Lane, received on September 30, 2024. They live at 67 Cabot Lane, which abuts the subject property. Have lived there for over 30 years. Support the request for a special permit described in the notice. Having done it tear-down and rebuild theirselves on our current property, we understand the undersized lot issue. We're pleased that all other requirements are in compliance with the Chatham... that which Chatham allows. We do have a few minor requests for consideration. We are full-time, year-round residents and such. It will be the only abutters who will be around for the entire project. Construction can be noisy, so we ask the contractors not commence work prior to 8:00 a.m. and end at a reasonable hour. We have maintained a rail fence along the property line with the former property owner, rail spelled R-A-I-L, that type of fence, equally sharing any maintenance costs. We assume the fence will be retained. Our utilities are underground with the control box in close proximity to the lot line. We ask that there be caution during construction. In summary, we support granting the special permit. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that has a question? Or wishes to speak against this application, seeing nobody anywhere that wants to do that? We'll go with... Do you want Attorney Ford to talk about the rail fence?
Yeah, just to tell you that we had... We sent that letter when it came in to our clients.
Yeah, I can speak to it. I just spoke with our clients. He actually has been in touch with the next-door neighbors since that letter.
Yeah, that was a while ago.
Yeah, they were just in touch last weekend and had a very good conversation. Our client's committed to working with them on the fence. We totally understand about the utility box, and there will not be... You know, there won't be any issues there. And then he also discussed just work times. I'll mention this now. We've committed to all the neighbors that we've been in touch with. We've been in touch with many of them, because we know many of them, that there would be no outside summer work, which is a typical condition we've done in that neighborhood, so everyone understands that. In terms of the 8:00 a.m. request in the off-season, we did suggest that typically people get to the site around 7:30, get started, sometimes a little earlier than eight. The neighbor said he understood that. They just didn't want people starting super early in the morning, so we committed to working with them on the off-season work as well and being respectful, you know, of them being there. So, not a 8:00 a.m. start, but not an early morning start. We said 7:30 is what our client discussed with them, so...
We'll discuss those.
Yeah, we can. So, I just wanted to share, what we discussed is 7:30 in the off-season, no summer outside work, and then the fence will be taken care of and the utility box will be respected.
And we'll see what Paul on the board recommends, and we'll take it from there.
Sure, sure. Absolutely.
All right. So, at this point, I think I'm at... Do I already do... No. Is there anybody that wishes to speak against this application or has a specific question? No, you did your rebuttal. Questions from the board? Paul?
I don't think I have any questions. This neighborhood has been going through transition over the past 15 to 20 years, and all of these houses have been going bigger and nicer, very nice. I miss driving down Billings Road and seeing stately Wayne Minor, but in the dome place, but I think it's going well. So, I don't have any other questions.
All right, Lee?
I just have a question regarding the septic tank that will be under the driveway, correct?
Yes.
And the driveway material will be shell or rock?
Some type of pervious material, yes.
Right, right. It's a big space, that driveway. Is there a reason for the size of the driveway?
I think it's really just to navigate getting... So, you have to navigate getting in and out of the garage, for one, so that requires a little more room if we go to the site plan. So, it allows, again, if you have a car in the garage... Actually, I'll use my high-tech pointer here. If there's a car in the garage to get out of here, you need enough room to back out and do this, so it allows for a car to do that while still having room to park a couple cars. This neighborhood, if you've been through, it's not really a neighborhood where it works to be parking off the site, like there's not street parking. So, we try to provide parking where folks can park vehicles on the property and not end up flowing out on the street. So, that was the intention. You know, you can fit a couple cars in the driveway and then still have room to get a car in and out of the garage.
That makes sense.
That's the intention.
Thank you. That makes sense.
Thank you.
Let's see. Jenny, questions?
I do have a couple questions. So, maybe this is for you, Aaron. The average grade for the existing is 22.2, and the average grade for the proposed is 23.2. Why is that a foot higher?
So, a couple things. The current grade drops off in the back, right here, a fair amount. So, as Inspector aware, the way the grade works, your grade plane calculation. So, the intention is to have the grades slightly increase here around the structure so that the directly adjacent grades off the back are flat. There'll be a terrace area out there. Right now, there's a bit of a hole right here. You can see this drops down to 22 here.
Yeah.
So, that's coming up by, you know, I guess, a couple feet. So, the 24 carries off here, which is why the grade plane adjusts slightly. So, there's a bit of a pickup on the back that brings it all up by a foot or so.
Well, that's kind of why I was asking, because it does seem, when you go and visit on-site, that it is higher. I mean, you're saying it's the back. I really technically call that the front, because that's the water side, right?
Okay.
So, the... So, it does... To me, the elevation already looked higher than the house in front of it, which is...
In front, meaning down on Billings.
Yeah, on Billings. So, actually, the one, it's 56 Billings, I think.
Yeah, so what drives sighting is largely, right, you have your street elevation, so you want to... You don't want to be down too much from that, because then you have drainage. you have drainage issues, right? So it's relatively consistent from the street, and then really the only adjustment was just right here, was bringing that out a couple feet.
So from the street, is it, it's not going to be, it's not going to read that it's a foot taller?
No, it's, no, no.
Okay.
No, the adjustment was that, it's a little confusing, because again, with the grade plane.
You're taking average.
Yes, the grade plane comes up in the back, is what's, is what's happening.
Yep.
And then, yeah, so it's not going to, it's not going to lift, it's not going to look like it's sitting out of the ground taller.
Okay, so Mr. Ford said it's quite, it's taller, and it's quite a bit taller. It's 9.3 feet taller than the current house, which is a two-story house. Is that right?
Yes, but a very different design home, right? So like a Cape style versus, you know, this client did not want to do a Gambrel, right? So a Gambrel, you end up with more mass, but not necessarily as much height.
Right.
So to have a pitched roof.
Yeah.
You end up with more height, but you end up with more of what looks like. So our client was more interested in having what reads more like a story-and-a-half house as opposed to a two-story. So when you do that, the height is taken from the peak, right? So yes, it's technically higher from the peak, but the roof mass is lower, if that makes sense, right? Because you're bringing, you bring the scale down by bringing the roof down.
I don't think the existing house is two-story. It's kind of a one-story with an old, long dormer along it.
And the dormers are essentially flat on the.
I think we have a picture.
No, I understand, and I.
There it is.
That's the.
Yeah, I, it's just going to be significantly taller than what's there. And, and to the point I was making about the grade, it's already a little bit of a higher elevation than the homes on Billings in front of it. And the two, the homes that are behind it on Cabot, on the other side, or in front of it, however you want to, they are both listed here as, the height's not available, but I know, I know by driving there that they're pretty, they're not tall.
They are, all their homes. Now, we have been, I will say, we've been in touch with many in the neighborhood, because we've, we've got to know the neighborhood very well. I understand, you know, what you're, what you're sharing, and it's certainly a, you know, different design home and a larger home, but we have reviewed with the neighbors and, you know, they, that no one had, no one from, no one that we've discussed with this, you know, this project has had any concerns about that, I would, I would share, and we've been pretty outspoken.
So is it, is it fair to say that it's going to look 10.3 feet taller from Billings?
I think that's a tough question to answer.
Maybe not, because that's based on average, that average grade.
It's an average grade. It's, because it's a great, the grade, grades are, it's a grade plane calculation.
Yeah.
So it's grade divided over a plane that exists, and it does still drop off a bit in the back. It will look, it will look no taller than, you know, like the house, part of the reason we did that streetscape shot is it will not look taller than many of the homes that are directly adjacent to it. So this house next door will frankly probably look taller than it will. I mean, this house is a bit closer to the street, and it's certainly.
That's 29.6.
You know, it's, so it's taller.
Yeah, that's, that's 67.
The house diagonally across the street here on the corner is also taller. So it, relative to his neighbors, it will not look.
I, I'm not arguing that. There are a lot of houses, as Mr. Ford has put together here, and you can see, too. I just was questioning, you know, one, one last thing I'll make about the height. The house in front of this house, the water side, is 56 Billings, which is 26 feet tall.
Yes.
So they're just very fortunate that they have, you know, that's, that's a difference. That's a nice lower height vis-à-vis the others. That, that's all I had. Thank you.
Any questions? We already went through Paul, me, and Ginny, and now questions, Ed?
No questions.
And Dave Veach?
No, I have no questions.
No. I don't have any questions either, so I will go with Paul.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Ed votes yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
All votes yes.
As do I. All right, deliberations. Let's just go back to Ginny and let her finish. All of her thoughts.
Oh, I know, I kind of got to, you know, I, I don't love how tall it is, but I, I think it's detrimental to that particular part of Cabot Lane. But is it substantially more detrimental? I can't say that it is, because there are, as they have, as Mr. Paul Anderson and Mr. Ford have pointed out, several houses that are, you know, very tall, so.
Okay, deliberations, Lee?
Yeah, I, I, I think that, I think, I think it's a great-looking house. I think the style of it makes it look taller than it actually is. I mean, it is still tall, but I think it's the style, but I think it's, it's very nice. I, I don't, I think it meets the criteria. I certainly don't think it's going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. That, that's what the neighborhood is. So I think it'll fit in nicely. I'm not voting today, but if I were, I would vote to approve it.
All right, Ed, you're voting. How are you going to vote?
I think, you know, that's a very desirable neighborhood. People are, are improving their houses in that neighborhood. This one's being improved to sort of fit with the rest of the houses in the neighborhood. So I, I don't have any issues with the project. I think it's going to fit in nicely.
And Dave Veach?
Yeah, well, I, you know, it's, so, you know, thinking with respect to an earlier application and various areas in town of neighborhoods and changes in neighborhoods and things like that, and this neighborhood has been in transition for quite a long time. And, you know, maybe in the early days, there were, there was an uproar, but I don't remember anything like that. I wasn't on the board at the time. Certainly, this is one that's definitely further along in being redeveloped from the original. There's actually still some, some of the old houses are still left in spots, you know, and they don't, and everything seems to work pretty well together, I would say, in my judgment, architecturally. I think that the question of the height, I mean, it is, you know, it's about 10 feet higher than the existing ridge, but I also, as Aaron points out, that the existing house, well, you might call it a story-and-a-half, that the pitch on the dormers is really shallow. It doesn't look good particularly. So there's, there's a need to increase the height to a certain extent anyway, just to meet, to overcome some of that. This style is shingle style, is this sort of a, in my view, a poohemous and savory take on shingle-style-type things with fairly steep pitched roof and all. It's an alternative to, as Aaron pointed out, you know, a Gambrel, it seeks to achieve some of the same things, but to me, a Gambrel does it in sort of a more muscular way, if you will, you know? Whereas this has a little bit softer to some degree. Anyway, I don't have, it certainly fits. It's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood in any way, shape, or form. And also, I think, you know, as far as the perspective or the view from the houses on Billings, I don't think people on Billings are paying much attention to what's going on up the hill behind them necessarily, and generally, when they're looking out the window. So I, all in all, I think it fits well. It meets our criteria and not substantially more detrimental, and we'll support it.
All right, Paul?
I, I agree with Ginny. I think that the design does make it appear even taller than what actually is happening there. I think the perspective that you gave us going down the road, showing how it'd fit in with the other houses helps that a great deal. I would agree, you can't say it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, so I will approve it.
Yeah, and I think the way the design of the house is, it's broken up, so it's not mass plus height altogether. And when we see that, a lot of times we bristle. But this is an attractive, professional-looking design that just has some tall eaves, essentially. And so I would be, and I really appreciate your, your professional application and everything that you've provided. It was exemplary, so I'm going to vote yes. So Paul, talk about conditions.
Yes, I will, I'll move to approve the application on the condition that all construction activity and vehicles will be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. And I'll divide up our next conditions. Between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed, and no work shall be permitted on the weekends. And the construction activity will be between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. only. That's during the summertime, June 30th to Labor Day. And that prior to that timeframe, construction activity would be between 7:30 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. only.
Okay.
Is that consistent with the representations you've made?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
And Ed?
Ed votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
All votes yes.
As do I. Ginny Anamis, congratulations.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
You, too.
Take care.
We have one more application, it looks like, and that's going to be 82 Kent Road, application 24-103. It's Attorney Riley. And Sarah's going to read the application.
Application number 24-103, David Parish and Elizabeth Parish, Care of William F. Riley Esquire, appeal box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 82 Kent Road, also shown on the town of Chatham's assessor's map, 12J Block 23, Lot G3. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and it is located 34 feet from the road where a 40-foot setback is required. The proposed dwelling will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration, and under the second except clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 1,831 square feet, 5.6%, and the proposed building coverage is 3,269 square feet, 9.9%, or 10% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and it contains 32,859 square feet, or 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section 5, via protected by law.
Attorney Riley, thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Bill Riley, on behalf of David and Elizabeth Parish. Mr. Parish is participating remotely, as is Charles Kraus, who is the architect. This is a situation where, talking about neighborhoods that are changing. So we've done a lot of houses down on Cove Hill Road and Kent Road recently, and so this is one of those. The, they're at the top of the hill, and so the, the, the design, as you can see, is an, sort of an upside-down house, so that the living spaces and the viewing areas are on the second floor, and the bedrooms and most of the bedrooms are down on the first floor. That leads to sort of maximizing the height of the building. I think that if you've been out to the sites, I'm sure you have been, you know that the lot itself is very heavily treed. Most of those existing trees are going to remain. So we think that even though, you know, it's a tall house, that the, it's going to be difficult to see from the road. First of all, you have to look up. That's tough to do while you're driving. But I think that the, the, in this setting, on this property, this is an appropriate house. So we're here before you, like the previous hearing, the building as designed complies with all the dimensional requirements of our zoning bylaw, but the lot, which was developed many years ago, has only 32,000 square feet, and so that's why we need the special permit. So the, the, what I'd like to do is ask Charles Kraus, who's the architect, to go through the design parameters that he worked with the Parishes on, to come up with this particular design. Charles?
Charles, are you with us?
Are you muted?
There we go. You hear me now?
Yes.
Charles Kraus, Kraus Associates. So when we looked at this design, we, we took a look around the neighborhood and the context, and David is also built in the neighborhood, trying to, to design something that's contextual, has the Cape feel, looking at a Gambrel side to side with some gables in the front that bring that, the lines down to a one-story level. Try to keep as close to a one-and-a-half-story look as we can get, using bleaching oil shingles to get that silvery weathered look, Western red shingles on the roof. Try to keep, you know, in keeping with, like Bill said, a transitional neighborhood. The scale of the house seems to work with the neighboring properties. And that, that's pretty much the exterior. Bill also mentioned that it's kind of an upside-down house. The bedroom's on the first level, and the, the main living space is up above. That's kind of the design in a nutshell.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Charles. The, we also have David Parish online. He's the owner of the property, and he's going to go through the planting plan, which is shown on the, on the first page of the original handout. Have you all seen it? Yes, there you go. Oh, David, go ahead and introduce yourself and.
Yeah, hi. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. I'd like to thank everyone for their time. My wife, Elizabeth, and I currently have a place in South Chatham, and we're looking to build this home on Kent Road to give us a little bit more space for the kids, their significant others, and with any luck, grandkids at some point in the future. Also looking to spend more time down at the Cape as we start looking towards retirement. I am a residential home builder, primarily in the metro west market of Boston, and really looking forward to building a new home for ourselves here. The proposed siting of the home essentially sits over the footprint of the existing structure, and in my opinion, tucks in nicely on the back of the lot. I would note that the existing structure does not meet the roadway setback requirements on Kent, and we are correcting that based on our proposed plan. We'll be utilizing a complimentary mix of materials for the hardscape in the driveway area. There'll be a number of field stone walls, blue stone terrace to the west, blue stone walkways in front lined with cobblestone. And the driveway materials will be crushed seashells, cobblestone, and ideally a minimal, minimal amount of asphalt. I think the idea is to have the entrance aesthetically pleasing, but also provide, you know, a high level of functionality. The easterly side of the lot that abuts Cove Hill has a number of substantial mature plantings that will be maintained to provide screening as you come in on Cove Hill. There are a number of very large hydrangeas, pitch pines, evergreens, paper birches, and some large oaks. I think it's fair to say that the new home as proposed will be difficult to see when coming in on Cove Hill, given that, that existing vegetation and the fact that the road elevation is about 15 feet below the building envelope. The southern lot line that abuts 51 Cove Hill will be planting a combination of thujagreen giants and emerald green abervitae along that line, and this will provide some nice privacy along the backside of the house. And then the westerly lot line will be doing something similar, but will likely stick with the emerald greens so that the overall look is a bit more controlled, and this will create a nice visual and provide a buffer between 82 Kent and the neighbors at 73 and 23 Rover Run. Outside of some of the extensive plantings on the lot lines for the proposed project, we'll also be planting a number of specimen trees and bushes to complete the overall plan. The plant schedule that's noted on this plan is really just a starting point for us, and we'll be looking to expand that quite a bit. I suspect we'll be looking at 30 to 40 evergreens for the project and a few hundred deciduous shrubs, perennials, and grasses. And, and overall, I think it's going to be a great project, and my family is super excited. So with that, I'll, I'll hand it back to Bill or, or take any questions.
Thank you very much, David. So a couple of things I'd like to point out. You know, we measure the height of the building from the grade plane, and the. We measure the height of the building from the grade plane, and the, as you look on the site plan, the grade plane on the proposed side of the site plan is 45.4, and the top of foundation is 47.2. So in other words, the, before you really start to measure the house, you know, you're starting from a point that's two feet below the top of the foundation to measure the height of the house. So you're measuring it from 45, where the top of foundation is 47. So I'd just like you to, you know, keep that in mind when considering the height of the structure. In terms of visibility of the project from the street, if you look at the site plan, you notice that the lot line is a substantial distance away, particularly on the northeast corner, from the actual paved road. I mean, it's, I didn't measure it, but, you know, 20 or 30 feet, and if you've been there, you know there's many very mature trees in that area, so that we think that in terms of the visual impact that this project's gonna have on the neighborhood, which is so important, both to the Parishes and to the neighbors, is gonna be very much screened from the streetscape. So I would like to keep that in mind as we go through the criteria here. So as they pointed out, the design utilizes some gambrels on the ends, but the front of the house has the pitched roof dormers, and again, although, you know, we're at 29.9 feet, I think, 29.8 feet of height, we ask you to keep in mind that we're starting two feet below the house, and Charles has used, I think, these front dormers and the rear-side dormer to help bring the roof down. They didn't want to have a roof deck. Thankfully, it's not a cupola, and that, so the top railing of the roof deck has to comply with the maximum height, so that is the, that is the height point on the property, is the railing around the roof deck. So the actual ridge is a couple of feet below that, and I think that's, again, that's important for you to keep in mind. On the third page of my handout, I went around the neighborhood, primarily the houses between us and the water, although some of the other houses, and calculated the gross floor area. And so our proposed gross floor area is 6,732 square feet. 51, which is the building right behind us, is 8,457 square feet. 38, as you come up the hill on the right, if you noticed that, is over 9,000 square feet of gross floor area. To be candid, I was really surprised when I started doing these calculations. We have 15 Cove Hill Circle, which was approved by this board a couple of years ago, which is 8,500 square feet, more or less. Then we have 14 Cove Hill Circles, just under 6,000 square feet gross floor area, 73, which was just approved a couple of years ago, although it's 5193. If you remember the lot, this is a lot that is more like a cliff going down to Ryder's Cove. In fact, we'll be in, we've already filed to rebuild the dock that's at the foot of the cliff, and so although it's one of the smaller houses, it's 5193 gross floor area, in terms of its impact on the lot, it uses a significant proportion of the upland of the lot. So we think that in terms of question one, is the site adequate for the proposed structure? We believe the answer is yes, because we meet all dimensional requirements of the current bylaw. The current house doesn't meet the sideline setback for the garage, but we've corrected that. The, you know, compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with the neighboring properties. The, I think that reviewing the gross floor areas of the structure shows that although we are bigger than a bunch of the, one directly in front of us, the others around us are actually larger, and so we believe that we are compatible with the neighboring properties. And actually, you know, as we just talked about in the previous hearing, you know, there are some original houses still in the subdivision, which were built back in the 50s and are quite small, but we don't think that our project has a negative impact on them, because those are properties that you don't drive by our property to get to. They're all much closer to Route 28. Extender of proposed increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure for our use. The only nonconformity, as I mentioned before, is the lot is less than 40,000 square feet. The new home is considered an intensification of the nonconformity, because we are increasing the living area on an undersized lot. Suitability of the site, including but not limited to, impact on neighboring properties around the natural environment, including slopes, vegetation, wetlands, groundwater, water bodies, and stormwater runoff. Well, we do have a concern about slopes and stormwater runoff, and that's something that Mr. Parish, David, if he's gonna be running the construction, or whoever the contractor is, is gonna have to be certain to make, that the stormwater generated on the site is controlled on the site, is not allowed to get off onto the, onto the street. Impact of scale, siding, and mass on neighborhood visual character, including views, vistas, and streetscapes. Again, I think that they, because the house itself is not gonna be very visible, we don't think it has any significant impact on the streetscape, just like if you drive in there today, you can barely see the existing house, because of the setback. We're actually gonna be further away from the street, and we have David's planting plan, which is gonna provide greater shielding, and certainly more, it's obvious that the current owners of the property, or the previous owners, really weren't paying attention to landscaping and their yard. Everything's kind of overgrown and, and just sort of wild. David has come up with a beautiful planting plan that provides not only screening, but real beauty to the neighborhood, that I think enhances everyone. So the, so the building is large, it's not as large as some of the others in the neighborhood, but because of the siding up at the top of the hill, it really doesn't have any impact on the streetscape or anybody's views or vistas. So I think that the, where the design is, I would suggest, similar to the other newer buildings that have been built. I didn't realize gray shingles were a thing. All the neighboring houses have gray shingles, and these will have gray shingles as well. I guess they, David explained to me, they're all dipped, and they, these shingles will ultimately weather, but they'll weather in a very similar manner, so that the color will continue to be consistent. Compatibility of the use with neighboring uses, it's a single-family residence in a single-family neighborhood. We believe a new Title V system's gonna be provided. We don't think there's any impact on traffic, flow, and safety, or noise and litter. It's an existing four-bedroom house. This is a four-bedroom house as well. Adequacy of utilities and other public services, they're very much adequate, and 11 and 12 really are not applicable. So that'd be our presentation.
Thank you. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please raise your hand.
I think I hear an echo.
No, seeing no one. On that, I will read the one correspondence from the Health Agent, Judith Giorgio, received on 10/09/2024. "I reviewed the proposed plan for this property. A floor plan for the existing dwelling is required to confirm the existing four bedrooms in the property. The property was given a variance by the Board of Health to transfer with the existing cesspools, condition that it remains vacant until the new dwelling is constructed. A new septic system must be constructed as part of the property redevelopment." Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application? Or has a specific question? Seeing nobody, I will just, Bill, did you wanna respond to anything about border health? Everything's gonna be fine?
No, because it needs a new septic system, so...
Yeah, okay, very good. Okay, so questions from the board. Ginny?
Mr. Riley, I have a couple for you. I think I heard you say the roof deck needed to be the highest point, so what's reflected?
What I said was, the railing and the roof deck is the highest point, and so it had to be below 30 feet above average grade plane.
Okay, so what's listed here is 29 feet, nine and five-eighths inches, is the top of that railing, not the top of the ridge?
That's correct. The ridge is a couple of feet below that.
Okay, and I thought you said, I mean, that is a roof deck, like a, it's not just a, I thought I heard you say that it's, there's not a roof deck, but I must have misunderstood.
No, no, I said there is a roof deck.
Okay, that's what I...
And the railings are, I apologize if I misspoke.
Well, at first I thought maybe it was just decorative, but it looks like it's gonna be a roof deck. Okay, that's, I must have misheard you. Can you repeat what you said about, you said consideration of the grade plane at 45, keep in mind, top of foundation's 47. Will you repeat what you were saying there?
Yeah, so if you look at the site plan for a minute...
Yep.
And you look at the elevations shown in the site plan. So the elevation next to the house on the south side is 48, and then 46 elevation, so the ground between the house, as you move over towards Kent Road, is around between 48 and 46, so say 47 feet, right? The, but the grade plane, from which we have to measure the house, the height of the house, is 45.4, so that it is three feet almost below the grade of the, of the house on the south side, so that, you know, so we're measuring, it's like, it's like you were measuring me from the floor, instead of from where I'm standing. That's, that's the point I was trying to make. I mean, I'm not this tall.
Okay, okay.
So, so the house isn't that tall either.
Okay.
You know, I mean, the, Charles is here, he can tell you how tall the building's gonna be from top of foundation to the ridge, but it's not 29, 29 feet.
Okay. Is, so while we're looking at the site plan, if you go down to the northern side, the lowest point down at the bottom of Cove Hill Road, which you do see the house a little bit, even through the trees, is 22. So my point is, it's very high up on a hill.
That's correct.
And is it the highest, do you know? Is it the highest point in that whole neighborhood?
Well, driving around, it certainly felt like it.
Yeah.
It's conceivable over Cove Hill Circle.
Yeah.
I drove over there as well, that's, we approved, the zoning board approved that a couple of years ago, and that rises up quite a bit also. I didn't, I didn't check the height, but if this isn't the highest point, it's pretty close to the highest point.
Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, okay, Lee, questions?
Yes, just one question. The, on the first floor, the room on the right is a sunroom?
Yes.
It's just not marked. It's a sunroom, okay. And then there's a deck above that?
Yes.
And then there's a deck over the front?
The front porch.
Porch, and a roof deck.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Ed, questions?
No questions.
Dave Veach, questions?
Yeah, yeah, Bill, I feel compelled to try to straighten out a number here. The plan indicates that the, that the ridge is not a couple feet, it's eight and three-quarter inches below the railing at the top. No, it's close. Close, yeah, two feet, eight and three-quarters. I just felt compelled to mention that. Is that correct? I don't know.
So how tall is the house?
That is correct.
Okay, good.
Is that what you were asking, really?
I don't really have a concern about it, I just thought for accuracy's sake, we would try to nail that down.
Yeah.
Thanks. I think that's all I have.
So, I'm sorry, are you saying then that the height of the ridge, not the deck, is 29.1 or 2? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I didn't try to do the math. Well, so they're showing, what they're showing is that the...
29.9, and you're saying minus eight and three-quarters.
I think our building commissioner knows the answer, so let's just go straight to him.
Yeah, Jay, go ahead.
I didn't do the math, but your approximation is correct, right? It's the, building height is 29.8, measured to the rail, because it's a required thing, it's not ornamental, and then the ridge is eight and three-quarter inches less than that, so that would be roughly .72 or something of a foot below the 29.8, so just over 29 to the ridge. The only question I had was access to the roof deck myself.
Okay, why don't you ask that?
How are they accessing the roof deck, Bill, do you know?
I do not.
Let's ask the builder. Builder?
Yeah, hi, it's, there's gonna be a set of stairs that go up from the second floor, there's gonna be a continuation of that stairwell, and then there's gonna be a roof hatch that opens up onto that deck, as proposed.
Thank you, I was just concerned whether or not we were gonna have some other projection above that, the railing, the guardrail around that deck.
No, no, we will not.
Okay. Questions? Paul, I think you're the one.
Yeah, I thought from Bill's demonstration that the house wasn't gonna be any taller than he was, standing right there, but I guess that's not it.
(laughing)
Okay, I have no other questions.
You know, my family's famous for having short legs and high foreheads, so...
All right, so just to clarify, I'd like to ask the builder and the building commissioner about the measures for runoff. Did, first, the building commissioner, Jay Briggs, did you have any concerns, or are you square with the, how the runoff is gonna be managed?
Well, they should control the runoff. I don't see any drainage proposed on the site plan, but at the time of the building permit issuance, we'd be looking for that.
And the builder?
Yeah, we'll end up, we'll end up putting in a number of concrete structures, and then we'll have drain leaders as well, and all of that will be controlled, and we'll, we can include that with our permit application.
Great, thank you.
That sound acceptable?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, very good. And so just to be clear, the height of the house in feet for laypeople, it's 29.8 when you're talking about the highest point?
No, apparently it's 29.1.
29.1, no. Building Commissioner, please.
They got the building height correct at 29.8, because we're measuring to the highest part of the structure. It's not always the ridge, it's usually the ridge, but in this case, it happens to be the guardrail around the roof deck.
And that is, I think, what I asked.
And that's 29.8.
Okay, all right, I thought you meant the ridge. I apologize.
No, I said the highest point. So, okay, so the highest point is 29.8, and the regular part of the ridge would be 29-ish?
Just over 29.
Okay, okay. Everybody's clear on that then? Just wanted to make sure. Okay. I don't have any other questions. Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Ed?
Ed votes yes.
Yes.
All votes yes.
As do I. All right, deliberations. Dave Veach.
Well, I don't, I think it's a good-looking house. I think the way that it's sighted is, I reluctantly agree with Mr. Riley's assertion that it's not really going to be a standout, because it's, it's at the top of the hill where it is. And, and if you're driving anyway around there, I think, I would like to believe that most people would be paying more attention to the road rather than what's up the hill. But, you know, there may be people walking, dogs, et cetera, but I, I think it's a reasonable proposal. I don't think it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood at all. I think the, you know, the, we're getting, you know, there's a little bit of leeway to the maximum height, but we have a professional builder, and they'll, they'll know to make sure they don't, they're not going to exceed that accidentally, hopefully. And so I'm not concerned about the, you know, they're pushing the height limit too much. I think that it's, I think it's a fit for the property. I do, and I'll support it.
Okay, Ed?
Yeah, I, I believe they, they sort of took elements from the neighborhood, the gambrel, the, the A-frame, and put those components in, into this house. I, I believe Mr. Parrish built the house right behind it, the new house right behind it, which is.
Yeah, that's correct.
Which is a, a very nice house. I think it'll fit in with the neighborhood. It's, certainly the new dwellings in the neighborhood are, are similar to this, similar in size, similar in height. In fact, a few are much larger. I mean, the height is getting close to our 30, but I believe it'll fit in. You want to be careful. If I remember correctly, another builder came back to us in this neighborhood with a, a house that was.
That was before your time, I think.
I remember somehow.
Well, I know, but I did, I did have a conversation with Mr. Parrish, where I pointed out that there's no coming back. That if the as-built shows the building is over height, you got to reduce the height of the building. I've already explained that to Mr. Parrish.
So, you know, I would, I would support the project.
Yeah, very good. Ginny?
Yeah, I agree. It meets the setbacks, meets coverage. I agree with Mr. Veach, the sighting is much improved, the new, sighting of the new proposed. It's a large lot. It's a very nice proposal. I was concerned about the height being three inches from the maximum on such a high point of the neighborhood. But, and I, I still have some concerns about that, because I think it's going to be, it look really, really tall, being at the almost maximum height allowed in Chatham, on such a high elevation with respect to the neighborhood. However, agree that a lot of the homes in that neighborhood are large, and I think it will fit in.
Yep, I agree. I love the sighting of the house. I like the fact that they switched, or they relocated the garage. I think it looks really nice. It's a substantial house, but this is a site and a location, a lot, and a neighborhood that can handle it. So once again, I mean, it meets our criteria, criteria, especially 1, 2, 4, and 5. So I think it's a good project.
And Paul?
Yes, I think the, the lot itself and where it would be sighted up high really hides it to a large extent from the height issue. So I think it certainly will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
And I agree with 1, 2, 4, and 5, adequacy of the size of the site, including but not limited to the maximum lot of building coverage and setbacks. It's compatible with the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties, suitable for the, for that area, and it has no negative impact on scale, sighting, and mass in the neighborhood. I, I support it. I, it's a nice spot that's very private, and he, the builder is forewarned about the height, so he needs to worry about it, not us. So I'd support it. Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted with the standard conditions that all construction activity and vehicles shall be contained on site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. Between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed. No work shall be permitted on the weekends, and construction activity between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only.
Can I, can I address those, please?
Yes, please.
The, given the location of the building site, a substantial distance from the road, plenty of room for, for the building there. Mr. Parrish just finished a building next door, where, of course, unfortunately, didn't have to come to zoning, so he worked right through the summer.
So are you trying to say you don't want to have to keep your trucks on site?
No, no, no. He'll keep the trucks on site. We want to work during the summertime.
Oh, that's what you want?
Limitation, limitation, no work before, in the summertime. No work before 8:00, no work after 5:00, no work on weekends.
All right, let's see what the board thinks of that. Ginny, what do you think? In this area?
I mean, it, it's a large lot. I think it can support it, and yeah, I, I would be okay with it.
The noise, do you think is?
Well, there's.
On the weekends?
We all commented on how private it is.
Yeah, sure.
So I, I think it could work.
What do you think, Lee? You're not going to like it.
I'm, I'm not voting today, but I like those summer conditions. I think it's really important. I think it's a neighborhood where you do have a lot of people that are there only in the summer, and I, I'm in favor of the summer conditions.
And what do you think, Dave Veach?
Well, I, I mean, not knowing any more of the history, but given that he's done it next door, and done, done all the work next door through the summer, and I'm gonna, nobody's presenting that, that neighbors objected to that, or had any problems with it. Anybody, has the department heard any complaints or anything that you're aware of?
Maybe not from the last project that Mr. Parrish did, that I'm aware of.
We do occasionally get complaints about people working on Sundays.
Oh, okay.
But when I get the complaint, it's Monday morning, and the incident's already passed. But anyone that does experience contractors working on Sundays, they're to call the police, excuse me, the police department, they enforce that.
Yeah.
Not just for a special permit for, for any job in town. No work on Sundays or holidays.
I'm aware that Mr. Riley was asking, Attorney Riley was asking for no weekends in the summer anyway, right?
That's correct, yeah, no work on weekends.
They're seeking to limit the hours, but seeking to be able to do exterior work.
Work in the summer, yeah.
In this situation, and, and with that history, I, I think it's a, I think it's a risk that we can take. I, I think that, you know, it's, once they get up there and they're working up there, it's, it's not, it's kind of above everything else that's going on in the neighborhood. So I, I, I could support doing it that way.
That's two in favor. Ed?
You know, as long as the vehicles are restricted to the property or permission from the other neighbors, I'm fine with that. As far as noise, I look at it differently than everyone else. I feel like we should spread the noise out throughout the whole year and not just subject the summer residents, especially being a year-round resident.
Yeah, okay. So you're okay with it? That's already three. So Paul, just for the sake of argument, what do you think?
Well, I'm trying to, I'm confused at this point. What is it that you were objecting to, Bill, on the standard conditions?
They want to work on weekends, Paul.
No, no, no.
I'm sorry, they want to keep the exterior during the summer.
We want to be able to work Monday to Friday between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM through the summer months.
So you want to be able, you want to be able to do exterior construction?
Yes.
And you want construction activity still between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM?
That's right. Nothing before 8:00 AM, nothing after 5:00 PM, and no work on weekends.
So it's just the exterior construction being turned off between June 30th and Labor Day?
Correct.
That you object to?
Right.
That you object to, yeah.
And what's, what's the occupation like in this neighborhood at that location?
As far as I know, the Petersons live there year-round, but they're right down on the water. 73, Jessica Go, they're just part-time. I think all, all the residents there are part-time. Some of the houses closer to Route 28 might be year-round.
But the, the part-time people are really the people we're talking about between June 30th and Labor Day, right?
Well, I know, but they all just built their houses too, so.
So they don't need quiet anymore?
No, they, first of all, it's not that noisy.
Oh, I see. They may be deaf at this point, is that what you're saying?
No, think about it. Where's the noise? When you, when you tear down the old house, your big machines digging a cellar hole.
All right, let's not get lost in this.
Okay, all right.
There's a lot of noise. There's a lot of banging.
No, not anymore.
There's banging.
No, not anymore.
When you're making a new house, there's banging.
No, they use nail guns now.
Okay, that's even.
Pop, pop, pop. I just don't think the noise is that bad.
All right, you're doing a good job for your client. Paul, what do you think?
Well.
It's already three people that have said okay, so.
So if I said okay, it'd be four. Is that what you're saying?
That would be.
And if I didn't say okay, it would still be three.
It would still be three. I think we go with the majority on this type of thing.
Okay, all right. Well, I will, I'll eliminate then the 2A section, no exterior construction will be allowed on June 30th, between June 30th and Labor Day. We'll delete that section. Okay?
Okay.
And Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Ed votes yes.
Yes.
All votes yes.
And as do I, it's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yep, okay, so that concludes.
Thanks, everybody.
We just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Ed votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
Now, as do I. What time is it?
4:59 PM.
All right. Good night, Chatham.